Our third public hearing um for that second tranche of zoning code amendments. Uh, once again, planning commission unanimously recommends the adoption of the proposed zoning code amendments. Uh, council should hold an open record public hearing, consider testimony and adopt the proposed code changes. Uh, once again, ordinance five, five, one, three. And that this ordinance uh was review, uh, excuse me, uh, had a public hearing for the planning commission on the nineteenth May. Uh, discussed by the city council on May twenty eighth. Um, and that it pertains to changes or proposed changes to boundary line adjustment. Uh, family daycare providers, co-living housing, uh, new housing and non-conforming buildings. Residential cluster development and market-based parking, which applies both to the Bremerton municipal code and to uh Siberia plans. So boundary line adjustment, uh, if you have a dispute with your neighbor on where the property line uh lies between your two structures. Um, we have a process for altering the placement of that property line. We refer to that as boundary line adjustment. Um, we've had that code in place since I believe twenty twenty-one. And uh, we have been gathering feedback during that time, um, and it's led to the changes that are proposed here today. Uh, that would allow for minor deviations um from munis- the, excuse me, from uh the underlying zone. Uh, and allow for additional flexibility for the types of documentation that you need to submit. So right now, our um, our boundary line adjustment, um, our record of survey and our deed of conveyance are all in one document. And we'd be allowing for more flexi- flexibility to allow those as separate documents that are submitted uh for for approval. And then uh just minor points of clarification, uh portions of the code were pointed out as being somewhat vague and those are proposed uh for revision. Um, family daycare provider, this is required by the state of Washington. Uh, that we allow for uh for daycares of twelve or less children in any residential or mixed-use zone. Um, there are requirements that there be a uh loading, a safe loading area that meets state standards. And that the uh adjoining property owners must be provided notice um of of the business. Co-living housing also required by the state of Washington. And this is a residential development with sleeping units that are independently rented, sleeping spaces, rooms. Uh, in which residents share kitchen facilities with other residents of the building. Um, minimum lot size, so the lot would need to be large enough. To at host at least six multifamily residential units. So that relates to the minimum lot size. But then the density is adjusted by the state that each sleeping unit only counts as one quarter. Of a dwelling unit, and that's to promote this type of development. That's a very affordable type of living. New housing and non-conforming buildings. So once again, a state requirement. Where it is uh required that we allow for the conversion of existing commercial buildings to multifamily uses. Uh, the building must have received an occupancy permit within uh three years or more ago. Meaning that if the building was constructed in nineteen eighty, uh, you don't need to have had an occupancy permit in the last three years to apply. This means that if you have new construction. Uh, that you need to wait at least three years after uh your initial occupancy. In order to convert to multifamily units and apply for this program. And that's because there's a number of measures that are mandated from the state uh for incentivizing this uh. This redevelopment, namely that the state requires the city have a fifty percent bonus than that of the underlying zoning. Um, when this conversion occurs. And that the city cannot deny a permit based off of any existing non-conforming height setback, building modulation or uh similar standards. Uh, that and just to clarify, that bonus density doesn't uh doesn't apply. Uh, if if this the project can't meet base, basic life sands, haha, basic life safety standards. Uh, or is found within a critical area where they're buffer. Residential cluster development, this uh, this development uh section was originally um. Proposed for revision to remove minimum parking standards. And then um, it has also been updated to uh match requirements for open space with Kitsap County. Currently, the code requires twenty percent. Uh, the proposal would be to fifteen percent to match the county. And once again, moving lot size requirements, uh. It follows the same pattern that initially this this code section was proposed for single-family development. Now that we have additional housing types, those lot sizing requirements don't make sense. Uh, and the big one, market-based parking. So market-based parking, uh. The legislature recently passed um SB uh fifteen fifty-two ninety, uh, and it was signed by the the governor into into law. And now state law requires that no city can require more than point five parking spaces per multifamily unit. One parking space per single-family unit, uh, one space per five hundred square. Square feet of non-residential use. And on top of that, there's exemptions from parking for affordable housing, residences under twelve hundred square feet, senior housing and other housing types. Um, in the legislature, and I'm gonna read this, uh, in their findings. Uh, the legislature finds that predetermined onsite parking requirements needlessly drive up the cost of development. Particularly housing, discouraging walking and multimodal transit usage. And encourage excessive reliance on automobiles with attendant impacts on human health, greenhouse gas emissions. And the legislature further finds that the amount of parking that a project actually needs should be determined by a case-by-case basis. By permit applicants sensitive to actual market conditions rather than one-size-fits-all regulation. So we open uh this market-based parking discussion with these changes recently made by the state. That being said, market-based parking, what is it? So that is the state proposal. The city proposal. Is that uh all parking be market-based, so we wouldn't have any requirement for minimum, minimum parking. But that that would be uh a market-based decision based on each applicant's uh required number of spaces. Um, so after considering different recommendation options, uh, the planning commission. Uh, reviewed reducing parking to minimums, uh, considering a temporary moratorium on parking to recommend to the city council. Or completely transitioning to market-based parking. After considering those options, the planning commission unanimously recommended the city council transition to market-based parking. Following the May nineteenth public hearing. And uh, you should note that parking, when it is provided. Will still need to meet minimum design requirements under the proposed code of BMC twenty forty-eight. So we have design requirements for safety, as landscaping, et cetera, those would still apply. Market-based parking, so and how it affects urban design. So here's a quote from Mary Smith, uh, the uh, the uh document shared parking from the Urban Land Institute. And that parking minimums increase the distance between destinations, making cities and towns less walkable. Thereby perpetuating a cycle of less viable transit and mobility options. The need for more driving and consequently even more parking. And we have this image here on the right of this cyclical pattern of uh the creation of more parking. Essentially leading to the creation of more parking. Market-based housing, excuse me, market-based parking, the reason for it being housing. Uh, you'll see here are the image on the right shows two parking spaces and a portion of a drive aisle. And then uh adjacent to that, a studio, uh, a studio apartment unit of five hundred square feet. Now, we do in our uh free, free ADU plans have ADUs that are below that five hundred square feet. So you can even reduce the size there to create housing units. And as quoted from Representative Strom Peterson, it's not about parking and that it's about housing. That we are in a housing crisis and that we are not in a parking crisis. So as we are seeking new ways to uh tools in the tool belt. To develop housing options, the removal of uh minimum parking standards and implementation of market-based parking could help. Uh, the cost of developing parking, uh, that sometimes seventeen percent of a unit's rent can be attributed to parking. And that new parking stalls can cost as much to a development as forty thousand dollars a stall. Uh, the state based a lot of their uh propos- uh, excuse me, their adopted changes off of the sightline report. So you'll see this a lot in conjunction with the decision-making of Washington State. And the findings in that report that one in four homeowner households. Um, in Washington State have one or no cars, that ninety-one percent of parking codes require two or more off. Off-street parking spaces for every detached home. Fifty-eight percent of all Washington renter households own one or no cars. Across the state, fifty-nine percent of localities require additional parking for larger apartments. Increasing barriers for family-sized units. So our existing code, if you have more. Uh, bedrooms in an apartment unit, that requires more parking spaces. It's pretty common throughout state. But that there are other considerations when potentially uh transitioning to market-based parking. Uh, and that's uh includes increased transit options from our other metropolitan cities in Puget Sound. Um, and that other cities in the Puget Sound may have much more developed transportation systems, whether that be light rail. Which is uh tru- truly where increased density um is is supported, uh, as per this quote here on the screen of the Urban Land Institute. Um, or bus rapid transit, which the city of Bremerton has neither. So potential unintended consequences for that market-based parking. Um, would be the potential obstruction of public facilities. If people need to park, they will find a place to park. Is that going to be on a sidewalk? Is that going to be in a bike lane or in their front yard? Um, areas in the city without sidewalks or bike lanes. So once again, we we lack in the city um. Basic infrastructure for sidewalks and bike lanes, and if you don't have a. Uh, tha- that infrastructure or a parking space, that could be potentially a problem. Uh, transit options, as discussed previously, there aren't as developed as other PSRC cities. Uh, that parking in landscape areas could lead to stormwater problems or increased uh city code enforcement. And there's always the the potential that if someone is constantly looking for parking, circling an area looking for parking. That could create increased emissions, um, if you don't have a readily available parking spot. Uh, with that in mind, uh, the city council should, uh, excuse me, the planning commission unanimously recommended. Uh, to adopt the proposed zoning code amendments, and that the city council should hold an open record public hearing, consider public testimony. And adopt the proposed uh code changes.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comment and action is anticipated. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Again, Micaela Stahl. Um, I know I'm late to the game on this, um, I just found out about it. Um, I did attend the session a um couple days ago or last week, I can't remember. But I agree with Mr. Younger's concern about market-based parking and believe that a minimum. Of one parking space be required per unit. And um, I'm distrustful of the statistics regarding the percentage of people who own vehicles. Is accurate as cited in the sightline report. I'm wondering what questions were asked and what that was actually based on. Um, I personally don't know of anyone that doesn't have one car. Most of the people I know have two cars. If you're a family, you have kids to transport. You're taking them to extracurricular to activities. I'm an aunt who. Uh, takes care of after-school care for my nieces and or nephews. Um, I take them places. If a family wants to go to the mountains, to the ocean, enjoy our parks. We're not taking the bus. To think that people are gonna give up their cars and just. And not have a place to park in their residence where they're living, I just, I I don't. Understand that thought process at all. Um, I fear that if it's left up to the builders discretion. That they're gonna opt for little or no parking in order to increase their profits. Um, another example again is that um. Place where there's four, four parking spots besides the one per unit. In a um, three-bedroom apartment or condos, homes. And they're allotted one parking space, and if you have family members coming. Um, there's only four additional parking spots on that property along with two handicap spots. So I'm just distrustful that it's left up to the builders, that they're going to. Um, actually provide sufficient parking. Um, so I would urge the council members to not adopt marketplace-based parking. Without a minimum of one parking space per unit. Thank you.
Good, Dale, Dale Spurling. I will provide one concrete example. For the former speaker. We own a fifty-six unit project on Burwell Street, two forty Burwell. We have one-half stall per unit. The project has been one hundred percent leased, one hundred percent leased since it opened in July of two thousand twenty-one. There are lots and lots and lots of people out there that don't have a car. We have never had any issues with parking at that project. I wish this had been adopted years ago. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Peterson and I live in Bremerton's District Three. Uh, please vote to approve uh this market-based parking measure tonight. Doing so will not ban parking. There's a steady drumbeat of cities in our region and around the country doing this. Including Port Townsend, Spokane, Bellingham. The entire state of North Carolina is considering axing their parking requirements statewide. The Kitsap Builders Association has repeatedly spoken out against parking requirements. As well as environmentalists and affordable affordable housing advocates. It's. Pretty rare that all those parties agree strongly on the same thing. This is one of those things. The effects of eliminating these requirements has been well studied and reported on. Uh, builders aren't dummies. They're in the business of building things. They're they're not in the business of building things that don't work and won't sell. They have a lot of their own skin in the game. They study this, they're experts on it. On average, they still build sixty percent, seventy percent of the parking they otherwise would have been required to build. And uh, I think there, there seems to be a a little bit of uh a wishfulness um in some people for. A a bygone time when all jurisdictions mandated lots of parking, because that's just what you do. Uh, but. Uh, and 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 people wish that maybe we didn't have to be aware of. How these mandates that that create plentiful free parking also create lots of sprawl and. Uh, they keep buildings that otherwise could go to some useful use, uh, empty for years and decades and decades. Um, and they make housing, they absolutely make housing less plentiful and more expensive. That's pretty well established. Um, but we all know that now. Uh, we've all studied this, we've we've. Sa- sat through the presentations and um, and we also know that there's an acute housing crisis going on, which is what. Many, most of the people here tonight have been ta- talking about. Um. Voting to keep parking minimums is a vote to do just a little less, uh, to lit alleviate that than than we otherwise could. Lastly, this is an incremental change. Others, the other cities that have done this have not slid off into the ocean. People don't just stop building parking. Um, and in a decade or two, when uh if parking becomes a problem in particular neighborhoods. There's always zoned parking management systems for cities. The city of Tacoma has a great program for this. I think people, the city of Bremerton could look at that in the future. Uh, please vote for um market-based parking. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Jamie Cluff and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Kitsap Building Association. We want to express our strong support for the proposed shift to market-based parking regulations. This is a smart forward-thinking policy that recognizes how outdated parking minimums have become a major barrier to building new housing. Parking requirements are one of the top three design drivers of construction design costs. And in many cases, they are the reason a project becomes economically unviable. Allowing parking decisions to me to be shaped by market demand gives architects and developers more flexibility. To design projects that reflect community needs, maximize open spaces and deliver more housing units. This policy also aligns with broader goals around smarter density plan, public transit use, walkability and reducing traffic congestion. We commend the city for proposing this important step and fully support its implementation. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Hello, City Council. Kevin Walthall again. Uh, probably won't surprise you that I am in support. Uh, of market-based parking here. Uh, this is something that I've been very passionate about for a long time. Um, I mean personally, I I'd spent a lot of time just following economic trends, uh. The data of it, and we are facing really a lot of pretty apocalyptic scenarios at one time. And I know that sounds very dramatic, but um. There was a time when I thought it was really tinfoil hat, thinking to ask, what if all the grants go away? And, you know, no municipality in America, I I don't think really is truly. Budget neutral, budget budget positive. We all depend on grants. And, I mean, who knows? Uh, we know what's happening at the federal level, we know state level, we're kind of talking austerity here. Um, and parking forcibly dilutes our tax base. Uh, I've very much covered that ad nauseam. But it's a low-value improvement. By forcing it on properties, we are forcibly impoverishing ourselves. The municipality, which then hurts our ability to provide affordable housing, much less anything else. This is essentially, the other side of that, as we have heard today, is the homelessness crisis, which. The numbers are terrible, but, I mean, I don't deserve to be in the cushy life I have any more than. Anyone else. Um, I didn't deserve it. And I want that for everyone else. And so. What I'm seeing here, this scenario, it took us seventy years to get into this, seventy years really. Of parking minimums, of exclusionary zoning, the the whole shebang, the federal highway acts, all of it. It's all, it's all tied together. If we pass market-based parking. We won't see some overnight dramatic change. It's just not gonna work like that. What we will do is we will open the door for another decades-long process to slowly incrementally right the ship. When big projects with no parking get built. Or even proposed, it makes national news. I'm thinking like cul-de-sac in Arizona. Like, there's a very, very small number. Of projects with zero parking that ever get built. And like I said, it is national newsworthy when it does happen. So I hear the concerns and I hear the intuitive alarm. But I think it's unfounded. I think we need to open the door for sustainable incremental solutions, and that's what this is. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, City Council, uh, Mayor, uh, Garrett, good to see you. Uh, my name's Joseph Crane. I'm the executive director at Saint Vincent de Paul here in Bremerton. I'm also co-chair of the Kitsap County Affordable Housing Consortium. I think this is a great opportunity in front of the council. It's a great opportunity for the city. For all the things that we've heard this evening about uh affordable housing, lack of housing. Uh, those experiencing homelessness, uh, this uh measure is actually an opportunity for us to take a step in the right direction. Uh, I'm giving, giving you a personal uh account that I'm, we're dealing with right now with Star of Hope. And the development on Calo and Wycoff, very impactful project for the city. Uh, the Stella Maris House was originally o- opened up in February of two thousand ten. Uh, fifteen-bed women and children's shelter at the mo- at the time. And uh, it was required to have five parking stalls. Uh, o- only one of those stalls gets used and it's by by our case manager. Uh, so the, there's, this type, for this type of housing in this market base for affordable housing. Uh, it's a, it'll help tremendously for us to be able to build more housing without trying to worry about. Or getting our our ha- you know, our arm twisted behind our back. As we're trying to pinch pennies together to make these projects come together. Uh, we're going through periods of value, uh, what they call it VE, uh, value engineering. Where you've got to take your project and your dream of what you wanted to build for the community. And because of the certain uh cu- current requirements. Uh, the parking stalls add so much of a price tag to the project. That we can't build as many units. We can't build the amount of units we wanted to to build. Because of the money we have to expend on parking that I'm afraid we wouldn't even be able to use. Especially for the affordable housing, uh, or or shelter, uh, housing projects that we're gonna be doing across. Uh, Kitsap County. So this is a great opportunity for the council, uh, for our city. To uh provide access for us to develop these much-needed housing projects. And get them across the the finish line. We are literally trying to pencil these projects together and it comes down so close. Uh, to getting these funded or not. And this is, this is a great opportunity for us. So thank you very much. Please vote in favor.
Good evening, uh, council members, uh, staff. Uh, my name is Nichelle Chathri, uh, resident of District Three. Uh, I am in support of uh voting yes and eliminating these parking minimums throughout the city. Uh, a lot of good comments have already been made. Uh, overall, my uh general statement is. That by removing these requirements, it's not going to suddenly eliminate parking from the city. The homes that are there that have parking will continue to have so. Similarly, people will make good choices based on what their needs are. Somebody needs a home and they need three cars, they will provision for that. I do not own a car. I happen to have a garage. I don't need it. I should have the choice to be able to better utilize the space that I have. Uh, again, this is not eliminating parking, it's not mandating that, you know, you should not have parking. It's just allowing that dynamism to exist in the market where a certain percentage of homes will maybe have one parking spot. Some may have none parking spots and others can continue to have three parking spots if they need to. Lastly, this is also a a important issue in terms of like the environmental impact of these. Uh, extra uh mandates regarding parking. It creates urban sprawl, it puts pressure on our urban forests. It puts pressure on the green spaces that we have. So we have to like balance for these. And by eliminating these minimum requirements, uh, will allow the realities of the market and the and the. And the ground realities kind of like dominate uh the direction that we take. Thank you.
Council President, there is one online.
Well, let's hear them.
Maury.
Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Maury Bradley and I live in Bremerton District One. And I am here to support removing parking minimums and hope that the market-based parking is approved. I agree with the quote from the state recommendations and Mary Smith from Urban Land Institute. And really with a lot of like what's already been said from previous commentators, or uh, yeah. And yeah, parking minimums are one of the biggest barriers to having a city that's dense with businesses and housing. And it's a barrier to having one that relies less on personal vehicles to get anywhere. Uh, to share anecdotally, I live with two other people and we share one car. And personally, I would opt to get rid of that car because it's costly to own, but unfortunately, you do really need one to get most places. But I do walk around Bremerton a lot for errands and recreation, and I regularly cross the Warren Bridge to go. De- to downtown Bremerton to work, and I feel like most of that distance is. to downtown Bremerton to work, and I feel like most of that distance is just spanning parking lots or other some kind of space just dedicated to cars, whether that space is being used by cars or not. So I really hope that Bremerton adopts the market-based parking so we can host more businesses, we can have more housing. And without those parking minimums, hopefully in the future, like those businesses and housings will be closer together and walking or moving between them will be more feasible without the need for a personal vehicle. I totally see where the growing pains will be, but I think it's really worth it and it'll make our community better in the future. And thank you all, and thank you, Jarrett Jackson and the Planning Commission for their work.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, you guys are catching me at the end of my voice. My name is Michael Simons. I live in District Three. I'm here to convince council that we should accept the market-based parking. What I kind of see when I drive around and I look at the new construction, stuff like that, I do see market-based parking. When I see suburban, single-family homes and dwellings, I see three, four, five, six parking spots sometimes. That's where I, you know, you go up to West Hills, you go up to Pendergrass, they've already exceeded the minimums. And then when I go to more tight-knit communities, smaller communities, townhouses where it might be single parents, older folks, or stuff like that, they don't tend to need two cars to go to work or two cars. They might ride the bus. They're generally by transit lines. So they're more likely to get rid of cars, which are becoming increasingly expensive and require increased maintenance, and insurance is going through the roof. I have seen a lot of families go to single-car families, and I think that they should be able to choose single-car family houses. And I think that if that's what their desire is for, they're going to move closer to transit. They're going to move into a higher density and they're going to choose the smaller parking market. If other families think that they still need the two cars, the three cars, the four cars, because they have two 16-year-olds, right? They're probably going to choose to look at neighborhoods like West Hills that have more larger parking availability to them. That's what the whole point of the market base is. The builder is going to know the potential buyers of their community and their housing units. But this also allows us to afford places where you could add an ADU, where if you had two parking spots for your one house, now you have one parking spot for your house and your one car and one parking spot for the ADU. That still means that each unit has one spot. That's what we're allowing, and I think that that's a good way to look at this. Thank you.
Brenda Smith Cove. So I've listened to this in other hearings. I actually find this elimination of parking fascinating, even though it's crazy. This is an example of the Chamber of Commerce hive mind using the plight of the needy to enrich the wealthy, to make them wealthier. Sightline, which Mr. Jackson cited to, it's a product of a lobby. Everyone wants to pretend that developers aren't here to make a buck. You're not civic benefactors. They really don't give a flying S. They are here to make a buck. So when you have this realtor developer cartel talk about deregulation, which is what this is, that's why, because it'll make them richer. What I love is when they say, "Housing crisis. Oh, my God, we've heard so much about the homeless. We really got to do A, B, or C to help the homeless. These guys don't give a flying S." I've got it on tape, a partner of Wesley Larson, talking about how the Marina Square was going to create a cash flow to a homeless center. And that's the equivalent of the Fourth Street Action Group, you know, invoking the needy to snatch CGBG funds. This is crazy because it's basically a free-for-all. It's not planning. It's anti-planning. At best, it might be, well, let's see what happens. So you have Sightline producing a piece of propaganda work, which lobbies have always done. There are 150-year-old articles in American literature talking about the clash of lobbies and governments. And some even say, "It's okay, as long as the government is not weak." Lobbies may actually provide useful information. But now we have a lobby that's infiltrated in the Planning Commission, here in the council, here in the pews, in DCD. No one's talked about 6PPD, the toxin that poisons our waters. No one's talked about Evergreen Park. Every time there's a slightly special event there, our streets are clogged. So this idea that if we get profiteers to manage our public policy, our civic problems will be solved, it's insane. And we have a Chamber of Commerce person here actually suggesting that we get rid of state law that's been around for a half-century, when that state law protects like a 200-foot strip along the shore. That's how the Chamber of Commerce mind works.
Dave, it sounds like we got a person online.
Marlon Cameron.
Mr. Cameron, you have the floor.
Good evening again, council. I also am against the market-based parking. To me, it appears that this parking is being scapegoated in regards to, this is the reason why we don't have affordable housing. This analysis I find to be very one-sided. Our transit here is not adequate as it is. As many of you know, I'm a transportation provider and have been doing so for seven years. So this is actually great for me if you pass this because my business will continue to boom. However, from a transportation equity standpoint, this is horrible for the average Bremerton resident. I don't know who this housing model is for. How many people who are making these decisions actually are going to live in these units? Can actually pick up their kids from daycare, go and shop at Costco and buy $200 worth of groceries and get them home? That's not how a typical person lives. And many have already said it, right? This isn't going to ease the situation immediately. It may take some time. A few people said that it would actually provide choice. I submit to you that it is the opposite of choice, that this will expand generational poverty. Because time is the greatest asset, and it is difficult to maneuver around Bremerton, let alone this county. And so parking unfortunately isn't necessary. So I would hope that you would vote no against market-based parking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Anyone else for public comment? Well, it looks like you may have the last word from the public, Mr. Merrigan.
It's 9:07. I'll make it very quick. Please support market-based housing. Please support market-based parking. Thank you.
Very good. Oh, we did not. We did not. We got people sitting in the weeds here. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Jake Carter, Director of Construction, Habitat for Humanity, Kitsap County. We are a nonprofit developer. We lose money when we build homes for people. We provide homeownership opportunities for folks making less than 80% of the area median income. Parking is absolutely a hindrance to home construction, without a doubt. This is a huge opportunity for the city of Bremerton to be the leader in the county and in Western Washington. We have challenges that are immense, that have been discussed through many conversations through this long meeting. It's a chicken and an egg. We can't have housing. We can't have transit. You look at transit models, they're based on housing density. TOD, there's a lot of stuff happening, right? So parking inhibits housing, period. This is a fantastic opportunity. The city to be a leader, to potentially influence the county, to also look at their parking requirements. So please vote yes.
And I will keep it brief as well. Dean Kelly, I'm a Bremerton resident and architect at Rice Ferguson Miller, and I lead our housing team. I've been studying sites for their development potential for housing for over 10 years here in the city. The first two things I always look at, what's the density minimum? What's the minimum parking? Almost every time, that's the ultimate limiter. The developer may want to build more units. They may have the budget for more units. How much parking can the site support? And I think that the statistics that Garrett showed of a parking stall being $40,000 is actually low at this point, if you can believe that, especially when you talk about structured parking. I think parking minimums are especially punitive to things like affordable housing and the potential to develop those, and also kind of the smaller, middle-sized developments. We heard some talk about wanting to see more local entrepreneurship. I think those are the exactly the types of projects that are affected by parking minimums, where a larger project by a more established group can use the economies of scale to accommodate parking minimums. That's often not the case, and a barrier for entry to other would be developers. So please support this measure. Thank you.
Do I dare say that's it? We have someone online. We do not. I think everybody in the audience has spoken almost. Said Mayor Wheeler, you want to come up, Mayor Wheeler, and talk? All right. So seeing none, I'm now closed in the public hearing, and I'm open to the council promotion. I'm actually going to ask Councilman Coughlin. He has the updated packet that was downloaded forward. So go ahead and read it, sir.
Thank you. I moved to, excuse me, I moved to pass ordinance number 5513 to amend the Title 20 of the Bremerton Municipal Code entitled Land Use, commonly known as the zoning code, and amending development regulations of adopted subarea plans.
Second.
Second.
All right. So Councilmember Coughlin, we're getting a little goofy here. Let's try to hold it together. Councilmember Coughlin, you have the floor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Council President. Thanks for all the public input on this issue. Let's talk about some of the most pressing problems we have in Bremerton. We have a housing crisis that's only worsened over the past decade with rents and home prices up 50%. We have homelessness on the rise. We have longstanding vacant buildings that have remade unfilled, both residential and business. And we have a lack of small business. And, you know, we've heard from people today directly how much parking these minimums are affecting the housing supply and driving up costs. And I've heard from constituents for the past several years that want to open small businesses in District Three that have been held back because of these parking minimums. And I want to read a few examples from our current code when it comes to businesses. So currently, if you're a barber shop or a beauty salon, you have to have one parking space per 75 square feet. If you're a bank, one per 350. An office, only one per 300. Convenience or market store, one per 250. Plumbing, heating, and electrical, one per 600. Bowling alley, five parking spots per lane. Video game arcade, 15 per 1,000 square feet. A medical or dental office, one per 150, but if you're a hospital or medical center, 1.8 per overnight bed. Library museum, one per 400, and places of assembly like churches, sports arenas, stadium, one per four fixed seats. It goes on. It goes on. It is pages of very specific, overly specific parking regulations. And I have, again, had people in my own district that said, "I'd love to open this walk-up coffee stand, but the formula comes out to 0.56 parking spaces, and it gets rounded up to one, and I don't have it. I can't open it." So it has been holding back Bremerton for a long time. And I want to say, again, to be clear, this does not ban parking. It doesn't prohibit parking. It doesn't remove any existing parking. And we have a lot of surface lots across the city already. What it does do is enable extra housing. It enables businesses. And, you know, we've heard so much public testimony on how our city permitting is behind and permits are taking a long time, and that's exacerbating the housing crisis. This helps improve this by having staff not have to delve into all these overly specific requirements every time a permit comes up. And I want to say we pass this, we're not alone. There are a number of other cities that have removed their parking minimums from Buffalo, New York, Hartford, Connecticut, Minneapolis, Minnesota, tiny towns like Culver City, California, Emeryville, 12,000 people, to really big ones like Houston, Texas, middle of the road, just like us, Fayetteville, Arkansas. And the studies that have come out have shown that you've gotten 70% more housing in transit-oriented areas, 40% across the cities studied. It chips away at the lack of housing supply and brings down prices in these cities that have enacted it. So I want to be clear that the concerns is anytime we make a big decision, there are, you know, potential consequences. But I think those can be mitigated with smart administration and how we regulate our parking, that we have the tools at our disposal now to make sure that parking for the downtown core here is for people visiting businesses. It's for people shopping and spending their dollars downtown. People dropping, picking off childcare. We have the parking. We have the ability to manage it. We just have to be smart about it. But when it comes to tackling these longstanding Bremerton problems that have not gotten better, this is a concrete step we can take. I'm happy to be bold. We need to take the lead. We need to do something big. This is something big. Let's be bold. Let's be Bremerton. Thank you.
Councilmember Cameron.
Hey, how do you follow that? I don't know. I'm not going to get a round of applause. I'm just going to say, you know, something I do appreciate is the criticism that of the tokenization of the houseless community in justifying policy. I think I'm a little sensitive to that, and so I appreciate that there are community members that have called that out. I do support this from the angle of, it's just smart. I mean, it's just smart to just simplify things. Let's just keep it simple. Eliminating these requirements makes it a lot easier to grow small businesses, to grow the economy, to grow our housing stock. We've heard a lot of folks support it from all different angles of the issue. And so I support it, and probably, Council Vice President Rablowski, you want to go next, since I stole your thunder?
So I think I still run in the meeting, so I'll call on Vice President Rablowski. Go ahead.
But I bet she was the one to go next.
There's another point that I would like to bring up besides making construction a little bit less expensive, is, in theory, we're supposed to be growing a city. And every city I lived in, from New Orleans to New York City and Boston, I never owned a car. I walked everywhere or took a bus, or if it was a little bit farther, got a cab because I didn't have a rideshare back then. And I, market base means if somebody is trying to sell a house to a family of five people, they're not going to not put in any parking. But if you're trying to build an apartment building that's going to be primarily for single people or maybe a couple, and it's closer to a bus line, which I'll give you that Kitsap Transit is woefully inadequate. So hopefully by this, and we get more tight development in areas, that Kitsap Transit will get better. My grandson's 21. He lives with me. He rides an electric bike. He's never driven a car, and a lot of younger people have no desire to, you know? I mean, he gets all over the city on an electric bike. So I think we need to look at that, and I know some people have concerns that single-family houses should have more parking for different reasons, but you know, whenever I lived in, like when I lived in Ballard, we had a big party at our apartment, which was, you know, large. Not one person drove their car there. I mean, they took a bus, or they walked, or took a cab, so single-family houses are the same thing. If you're going to have them tight, not everybody has to drive there. So I'm very much in favor of this ordinance passing.
Okay, Councilmember Mochler.
Thanks, Council President Younger. I'm really happy about this ordinance, and I would like to salute the Ahab who pursued this way well for eight long years. And everyone who crewed. It's not just that more affordable housing can get built. And it is true, like, nobody's going to come to your house and take your parking away. I live in District Six, which, most of District Six is everybody parks on the street. I don't even have a driveway. So this isn't going to be taken away from you. But what I do have is a building that could maybe be an ADU, but couldn't have been an ADU up until this moment. Because it would have required, we'd have had two off-street parking units for my main house, which, you know. So that mean, this- you know, so that mean this, and I think a lot of other people are going to be in that situation where it's like they couldn't carve out parking on their property. And infill is an important part of adding density to make us into a city, a city with actual public transportation, where housing can be located on transportation lines. And anytime this council or any member of the public would like to support me at Kitsap Transit in my attempt to get such public transportation, not just for commuters, but all day long and in the evenings and on Sundays, I would really appreciate that because right now I am alone. Um, I just think this is a wonderful, wonderful thing. I am very glad for, that we are supporting it. And I have to say, full disclosure, I, I'm just not good with cars. I used to drive for a living and I, I don't, I don't really like them. So I, I don't have the sympathetic thrill of, you're taking my car. Sorry. Thank you all.
Would you like to speak, Councilmember Goodnow?
I think the only thing I've said all night has been yes. Um, yeah. So I, I remember we looked at this, uh, well, when we reduced downtown to point five. Um, you know, we had a lot of the same concerns, but you know, there were some things brought up tonight. Um, you know, one, like, get out of the way. Uh, uh, and I think this is a good way to do that. Um, you know, it's one less thing. Uh, folks feel that the uh, the city uh permit process takes a while. This is one more thing out of the process. Um, so I think this is a, a positive thing. It, it's not going to create a crisis tomorrow uh or whenever this goes into effect. Um, I did in ten days, uh, Anna can have her A D U. She can start building it. I just think, I, I think, I think it's a, a smart move for us to do this, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fry.
You know, I, I, I think there are too many reasons why to do it uh to, to say no. Uh, they've all been said tonight. Um, I, I do have concerns about the impact uh possibly to our culture. Uh, but uh, I'm nearing seventy years old. And it's really no longer my culture. You know, it's my kid's culture. Now, as I said recently, that kid has bought a home in a brand-new development with five-bedroom homes and no parking. And he doesn't like it. So that's, that's an impact. That's an impact. But you know what? He's going to learn and he's going to buy a five-bedroom home next time that has parking, you know? I don't know. I do worry about that or wonder about that. And that's not the only thing I wonder about at night as our world is changing, but I'm not going to stay in the way of it. I do want to call on, or maybe not call on, but challenge the developers. You know, the, the, the developers that I've been accused of being in bed with. Um, uh, no affiliation to any developer, nor am I any longer affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, but I am pro-small business. That's one reason why I'll support this. Um, but I do want to challenge you. I better see the home prices coming down. You can't just use this as profit, man. You can't do it. You know, forty percent is what I heard. Forty percent. It can cost up to forty percent. Am I going to see a drop of forty percent in the price of a home if we go through with this? We better. Or something close to it. So I'm in bed with y'all, you know? We'll have some pillow conversations about this. If we don't see those housing prices come down, I mean, come down, not just stay where they are now, but come down and make them truly affordable. Also a challenge to transit. You know, I hope they're keeping a wa- eye on this and as our population and density grows, they better step up. And we do have representation and I know that she's vocal. Uh, and so we, we expect that. So I guess what I'm doing is I'm saying, I'm making a deal. Okay, but the very justifications that you've used are going to be part of the deal. Let's get that housing price down if there's no parking minimum. I'll be watching. I watch Zillow all the time. Uh, the only other thing that I want to say is I am actually delighted that, you know, it's been uh the community really that has asked for this, but, but some of them have represented. K B A is here. We've got developers here. And I've got council members who are now your friends and who are saying, let's trust the builders. Let's trust the developers um and their expertise because we've got important conversations coming up about M F T Es. Uh, and I wonder if we're going to hear that same trust. So I'll be reminding people that we trusted y'all. Uh, this time, uh, let's trust y'all when it comes to the conversations about M F T Es as well. And I know I got off-topic and Eric, you want to go home, so I'll hand it back over to you. You've done a great job.
Not that simple. Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Now, now for my comments. It is late, but you know, I've based my whole career, not necessarily, and it's important when people take the effort to come down here or listen to a meeting on Zoom and make their comments, that should hold weight. But I also think about the forty thousand other people that live their busy lives. And uh, what would be the consensus of the community that I feel? I'm making the decision for them too. They may not have the time or want to put in the effort to come down here and give their opinion. I am so glad that the public that has spoken and the council sounds like they're completely excited about completely transitioning to market-based parking. What does that mean? I think, and um, I'm not the most senior person on this council, but I first got on council in two thousand and one, so I've been around a while. And for years, we had an ad hoc parking community, committee. You guys, anybody remember this, Mike, Mr. Goodnow, you would remember this. Dealing with all these parking issues. We have neighborhoods with parking passes. And eight years ago, there was a proposal to switch to market-based parking. And the public hated it. That parking spot's in front of my house. I deserve a parking pass. Well, you council are telling me, we're going to market-based parking. That's so good. I am so glad we're going to do that. I don't think you will. I don't think you will because of the political ramifications for that. So, Mr. Jackson, you're not getting off that easy. Come on up, come up here, please. I want to run a scenario by you. And first of all, please understand that these zoning changes, with the exception of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jackson, with the exception of the, my one sore point, which is in an R ten zoning. State law says you have to provide one parking space. All the other ones that we're passing here basically conforms with state law. It's mandated. We went through this in the cop plan. It's mandated, all these other changes. This Planning Commission decided to be more progressive and say eliminate it all. I want to run a scenario by you, sir. R ten zoning, building one house. Under, under the old rules, I think we had to have two parking spaces. Under the state law, we need to have one. Now, under the city of Birmingham's rules, if this passes tonight, you need zero. So if someone has a car, R ten, ten, ten units per acre, that car is going to be in the street. You would think, okay, new development. That's fine. The street should be able to support that. Mr. Jackson, if you have a single-family resident, how many A D Us are you allowed to have?
Two.
Allowed to have two. Do you require any parking for that?
No.
Oh, so now you're allowed, now potentially, if each person, each domicile, each unit has one car, you're putting three cars on the street. That's completely allowable, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. You see where we're getting at? And I'm fine with that. If we all realize that the streets, the right-of-ways belongs to everyone, you do not own the parking space in front of your home. We need to understand that. If this is what this council wants to do, fine. You talk about unintended consequences. I think about Councilmember Mokler saying, I think you said you're drive, you don't have a driveway. So you have to park in the street. I think about all those people that have residential parking permits that wish that that builder had put in a driveway. I gotta believe that nine out of ten would have wished they had done that. And so now, by the council's actions tonight, if this passes, we're creating some unintended consequences, in my opinion. Now, we think about, oh, well, we can always change that. No, we're going to create another scenario that happened in her neighborhood, I don't know how many years ago. And the next council's going to have to deal with it. It's not going to happen overnight. And I've also heard last week, a council member said, well, in those areas with those new developments, the builders are going to provide parking. They will. My response to that is if they're going, then what's the harm of putting a, a parking requirement of one? One per house. They're going to do it anyways. The answer is, there's going to be some developers that aren't going to do it. And they're going to spill it out on the street and the future city councils and the future mayor is going to have to deal with it. All right. I know where this vote's going. It is what it is. I can't change my fellow council member's minds. Now, we can have more conversations. It's nine thirty. But I think I know where everyone's at. So if you guys are okay with it, I'll call for the question. But if you want to do rebuttal and drag this on, we can do that too. I'll call for the question.
Councilmember Goodnow.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes.
Chamberlain.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Coughlin.
Yes.
Rebolowski.
Yes.
Younger.
No.
Motion carries, six yeses, one no.
Okay, folks.
Council President, can we take a one and one-half minute break?
No.
Um, if, if you don't mind, if, if you need, you can, uh, we're going to go to council member reports. This is an opportunity for council members. Hey, folks, if you're going to have conversations. Hey, excuse me. That's you guys back there, Ms. Walter. Nice to see you again, but can you go out there, please, sir? Thank you. All right. Hardly anyone's here for our reports. Just keep that in mind when you speak. I'm sorry, I'm, again, I'm speaking reality here. All right? Okay, this is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended. You know the deal. We're going to go with Councilmember Jennifer Chamberlain first.
I think I've got a couple of pictures. Uh, council District One. Uh, do I have pictures? Fantastic. Um, any, I, we did a little trail cleanup, right? Those are the pictures coming up. Okay, uh, so we did a little trail cleanup. Uh, the Steffensen Canyon Stewardship Group. Uh, we have random people coming. These are a couple of neighbors, uh, Jason and Gina. So here's the, the before. Let's show the after. Okay, uh, so what we did is we chopped some ivy off. It was so gratifying to get to chop some of the ivy off of these trees and give them a little bit of life. Looking forward to going back in another month and seeing the dead ivy hanging from the trees. Uh, again, another before and after. We can just look at it real fast. Here's another before and let's go to the after. Oh, look at those trees. They look like.